I'm going to call the meeting to order. Rebecca, will you please call the roll?
Here.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Yes.
Bremsman.
Yes.
Pam.
Yes.
Tohill.
Yes.
Okay, great. Are there any changes to this agenda, council? Not, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Approval of the minutes of the December 13th, 2021 council meeting. Approval of the December 23rd, 2021 special payroll in the amount of $1,009,6356. Approval of the December 24th, 2021 payroll in the amount of $125,773.26. Resolution approving employment in the wastewater department. Resolution approving employment of a communication specialist. And approval of total claims in the amount of $59,606.20. There any?
Motion to.
Been moved.
Second.
And seconded to approve the consent agenda. Are there any questions? I just have one question, and that is related to in the minutes.
The special from November 30th. I did not put on there because I didn't think we were going to have the right quorum here, but I was incorrect. I'll put that on the next meeting.
Well, this was under committee and board reports, was my question. There was a reimbursement for 10, 11, or 12. That was just discussed. I thought it was turned down, but we didn't vote on it. I just wanted clarification on that. Did we vote on that one? Because we had a vote for the other two, and there were three requests.
There was no motion made on that.
There was no motion. Okay, I just wanted to double check on that.
Okay.
Okay.
That was one of the water or sewer adjustments?
Yeah.
One of them, they didn't make a motion because...
Oh, there was no action recommended.
They were not going to recommend any action.
Okay, okay. Just wanted to double check. I was making sure that my memory was correct, so. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Not, please call the roll. Bremsman. Bremsman. Martha.
Yes, no.
Gandy.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Pam.
Yes.
Tohill.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes, but I need to abstain from the December 13th minutes.
Okay, great. We'll move on to resolution, action items, and ordinances. First action item is a consideration of letter to the Jefferson County Supervisors. Doug, you going to talk about this?
I guess, yeah.
Or John's?
Well, John has the history, but I can tell you what's going on currently. So we're at an impasse with the supervisors in regard to the 28E that covers the law enforcement center. So I'll give you a little bit of history for this year that I'm familiar with. January of '21, I sent an email to everybody on the committee, including the chair, bringing to their attention that we need to have a budget for that building approved by January 15th to bring back to council. And no one responded to that email. In May of this past year, you may recall the letter that we wrote to the supervisors offering a solution to the dispatch center question, which was basically to take the dispatch center, make it a department within the city, and then we would bill for services to the various outlying communities. Then we had the meeting in June with the supervisors, where I thought it came to understanding that we would all follow the 28E as it was written currently. Now, we didn't have a... It was a work session, so we didn't take a vote or a motion, but obviously the 28E is in force, and we should be following it. So that was just a philosophical commitment to following it thoroughly, because it hadn't been addressed. That 28E and the Jefferson County Service Agency had not been doing their job for 20 years in preparing budgets and making decisions jointly. It had eroded to a situation where the, I presume the sheriff is making decisions about that building, and then we just get a bill for it without the large expenses being approved or a budget being approved by the council at any time. In August, they wanted to start meeting with us, so we met, and I asked them if they would approve a budget for the current fiscal year, and they declined. And we've had a couple meetings since then that... One of them was a meeting that we spent the entire meeting going over five or 10 years of past expenses that the county had records for. And the meeting that was scheduled for the beginning of November was canceled by the We rescheduled for the Monday following, I think the Monday or Tuesday following Thanksgiving. Oh, in August, the county had suggested that we break the current 28E into two 28Es, one for the building and one for the dispatch center. The building side would remain unchanged. The dispatch center side, they just gave us an empty 28E. It was just a thought. There was no content to the 28E. They didn't propose anything to us. So I sat down with Aaron, and we wrote a proposal to them as to what to go into that separate 28E. We delivered that to them the week before our scheduled meeting, and they decided to cancel that meeting. They needed time to propose a response, which they thought wouldn't be ready until January. So they wanted roughly seven or eight weeks to prepare. And I know Christmas is here and New Year's and all that stuff, but I sent them back an email saying I'd rather meet before the end of December. No response. So then, a week or so ago, we got an email from Chauncey.
Yeah.
Their attorney. And their response was to our proposal in November, their response was just to cut and paste what's in the existing 28E, including the typos and the grammatical errors, and put that into the new 28E. So we have zero progress. We made two proposals to them in detail. We haven't gotten anything back from the county in terms of moving toward a solution, except they want to maintain the status quo. So we have another scheduled meeting for January 7th, but I don't see any point in having that meeting if they don't have a concrete response to our... one of our proposals. John's probably going to add more to this.
I'm going to add.
It's a little frustrating. We've been at this for two years, and we haven't made any progress whatsoever.
Yeah, let's go back another year, because we've been very patient. And a year ago, everything Doug described, we approached them about the idea that maybe there needs to be a different way to fund communication dispatch. And Aaron was pretty frank with them about, there's a way you can do it through the emergency management services levy. And essentially, that would accomplish something that has been an objective of the city in looking at this for the past two years. And actually, we're going into the third year of discussing this now, and I think that's more than a good definition of being patient. So coming into this off of the idea about the EMS levy, our purpose in talking about that was, we'd like to spread this as evenly as possible. Right now, you've got two-thirds of the taxpayers in the county here in the city, basically, paying for the jail costs, two-thirds, paying for the communication costs, basically 100% except for a couple things that are in the 2080 agreement right now, which are not the big costs. The big cost is personnel out there. You've got $400,000 to $500,000 a year that has been going on for years. When this was discussed, the first thing was the board was not anxious to have the EMS board consider what we were proposing. Secondly, they thought, we don't have to do this this year. Why don't we talk about it? But we don't have to do this this year. So nothing happened with the EMS board, except they didn't go there. This all came around to the meetings that Doug described. Doug was very meticulous as far as getting them good information. We handed out spreadsheets that had every cost that we could find from the public records at the courthouse. And, I mean, we tracked them. I didn't, but Doug and Aaron had information from the county auditor's office and so forth as far as what got spent out there. So when Doug describes them separating the agreements, almost all the costs of the Law Center relate partly to... A third of the Law Center approximately is the city police department side. A third of the Law Center is roughly about the same number of spaces and units for the sheriff's department. And then there's the jail. And consequently, you know, if the county looks at it as, well, we're spending a lot more money than you are, because we're spending twice as much almost that we budget for, because we take care of the jail. Well, there's a reason for that, and that's because the state code and the state Supreme Court says you have to take care of the jail. And so it's not a big deal. The taxpayers expect that. They've expected that for the last 40 years since some cases settled it back in the 80s. And for right now, we're just at a point where dividing out the communication dispatch question from the rest of the 2080 gets us to what Doug describes as an impasse. And, I mean, if they just keep saying, well, we just want the status quo, well, the status quo is what we were bothered with three years ago, two years ago, right now. And they just need to understand, we don't want the status quo anymore, to the extent that there are some people that really don't pick up their share of the ticket on communication dispatch. And the letter that's been drafted after, you know, a request from the committee and the city administrator is in front of you. And on the second page of it, it kind of describes who benefits from this. You have all of the fire agencies and departments in the county. You have the first responders throughout the counties, which every community has some responders. You've got the sheriff's department benefiting, the police department, the emergency management service, the ambulance service agency, and ambulance provider. And every town in every outlying non-municipal rural area gets the same benefits out of what comes courtesy of having a joint operation under 2080. And for the most part, I think most people don't understand that some of the costing on this doesn't shake out to every taxpayer being assessed the same for those services. That's one of the messages that this letter is intended to impart. But the other part of it is, there aren't a whole lot of mechanisms for getting to a better way of sharing the cost. The fact that we suggested the emergency management services is because it's a levy, basically, that's partly population-based. It's partly set up by statute so that it's a separate levy. Partly, and I'm not trying to throw a stone at anybody, but it doesn't put blame on any governmental unit as far as, well, you stuck us with that levy, or the city stuck us with that levy. It's a levy that's intended to benefit the whole county, and it's in the statute, and lots of counties use it the way we're suggesting, without it being that difficult to understand why that might be the way to get communication under a wing like the emergency management services budget. As far as that possibility, another possibility is either the city or the county can levy more for emergency services. I mean, why should we have to, though? I mean, if that's out there, it's going to lessen what the city has to spend on communication and dispatch if it comes out of the EMS levy budget. It's going to be more broadly spread as far as where the resource comes under the EMS levy budget. But that right now hasn't been grasped, or I guess smiled upon, by the other half of How big a disparity this is, I mean, I could let Aaron talk to that point, or Doug, as far as the fact that we're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars annually that admittedly, these people are our employees, and they've been our employees for a long time. Even though we're sharing the services with everybody I listed, we have shared the responsibility as far as IPers, FICA, the things that are benefits, benefit them just like they do our city employees. And, you know, at this point, we have pretty good logs as far as those costs for the last 20 years, and the fact we're just talking about them now, or at least in the last three years, is because it's time to talk about them. We, as Doug pointed out, the 2080 for quite a while, even though it was there and everybody had agreements on it year after year, we've only amended it three or four times since '72. It really didn't function like Doug has helped it to function by getting all the costs, categorizing them by the different paragraphs in the 2080 agreement, so that we know each part. And it really doesn't... It really doesn't challenge you if you look at it and you look at Doug's spreadsheet, and you look at the way that our proposals deal with those things. You can do this easily for all of the expenses of operating that building out there, except the communication. And if you agree on a source of funding for the communication, we could probably fix everything. So there have been some other things that were suggested that when Mr. Chauncey Molding, the county attorney, sent us his proposal that had drafts for what he called a bifurcated 2080 agreement. One part would be communication. It would be the old communication paragraphs taken out of the regular building 2080, and we would work on that. That's as far as the county attorney went on how that was going to be. Other than that, he just said, what I've sent you is the status quo. That's been the way it's been generally over the last couple of years, and that's why we're where we're at as far as sending a letter like this. Another thing that I was asked about, and I've been around the 208Es ever since early 70s. The 2080 has always been something that both sides desired very strongly. It saves the taxpayers a lot of duplicity. It saves as far as costing when we go out for things, the fact that both the county and the city have similar ideas on how these prices should work and so forth. Most of the time, we get good buys because we've got a united front, and we don't want to change that. The taxpayers, I believe, like 2080. I've seen 208Es in most of the communities I've worked with over the years. And so we're not anti-2080. We'd just like to get the consideration that we believe the city deserves for what we're asking for about communication balancing as far as the cost. One of the other things that I've been asked about is, how about mediating this, or having a mediator decide the question, or how about binding arbitration? We don't want to turn this thing into something that's in the Iowa Supreme Court. That happened with Marshalltown many years ago about jails. But instead, unless both sides want to put that into the agreement, there's no way we can really make that happen. At the same time, we can ask, if they'd be willing to do that, if somebody wants to mark up the letter draft that I've given you, we can certainly add a paragraph about, would you be interested in either of those alternative ways to resolve a dispute? And I think, you know, we'd get done with things a lot quicker than any other alternative. But other than that, the letters there for you to mark up or say things about if you want something else changed. Doug is the answer man as far as his spreadsheet and charting the costs. Aaron has looked into this as far as all of the alternatives. And, you know, I guess the worst-case scenario would be either a change in the way services are delivered, or a splitting of the 2080 over this issue. And I don't think that's the posture that the city public safety committee, the administrator, myself, or anybody that's been talking about this on our side for the last two or three years has taken or wants to take. But we used to have a more limited service than we'd provide right now. We used to have something that I would call relay. Daryl Hewland, 40 years ago, would pick up the box phone in his patrol car, and he'd call, and somebody would say, hey, the responders down at Libertyville, they need some help with something. And the Law Center dispatch would pass it on to somebody else to get that help on a joint agreement or something over at Dowd's or whatever. That limited response has been replaced by a lot better, a lot more modern response technique since we've had better radios, better communication. And so right now, we have, from the initial minute of intake all the way through verification that what was supposed to happen got done with follow-ups by our dispatch system. And that's about as good as it can get, and we like what we have. So we'll give credit to the dispatch and the way it's evolved. At the same time, it's gotten more expensive. It's gotten more technical and complicated. But I don't think we want to pare back on our services to save anybody any money. The other side of it, if you split, there isn't any doubt, just with the cost of radio equipment and stuff like that, that this thing wouldn't turn into doubling costs for taxpayers. And telling the county they should do it one way, and we'll do our own for the city, has never been the position we've taken. So we just want to get this fixed. We want them to understand this. This letter is intended to tell them, you know, don't just blow us off. I mean, we've been patient with you. We'd like to have a discussion about the communications cost, period. And at this point, anything else you want to add to the letter that I've helped draft, we, you know, like to talk about it here with you guys. And Aaron may have something to add. Doug may have something else. Okay?
Did you have a question, Tom? You act like you have a question.
Yeah. On part of this, where it says, "The city considers billing for services to remedy the disparity as a last resort before impasse," is that billing the county, or is that billing every individual safety entity? Or how would that work, and how would we actually...
Aaron has sent them a letter, and he can describe that.
Ideally, we would break the cost of the dispatch center up by population. So each municipality and the unincorporated county would get billed based on the population in that area. So if we were to bill by population, we certainly wouldn't be shirking our responsibilities, and that's never been the case. But we'd be asking each municipality and then the county to pay for their population base.
It would be similar to contracting for services. So we're providing dispatch services. You pay us a bill based on your population. That was the original proposal back in May. But the more recent one that we gave them in November was more comprehensive than that. All the communications expenses, contracts for maintaining computers and equipment, towers would all be bundled into a budget for dispatch, and then the emergency management would levy for that.
We'd be the fiscal agent, and then...
We'd still be the fiscal agent for the employees.
EMA or emergency management coordinator or commission would then levy for it through the county. Not a county levy, it's an emergency management levy.
And Aaron has tracked some of this, too. There are other communities doing it through this EMS levy around the state. It's not a ton of them, but it is an alternative way to do it, and it makes sense considering the history we've got. You've all got the letter in front of you. If there's things that you'd like to have us change, I wasn't sure if we'd say it's going out from the mayor, the council, the administrator, the public safety committee, or our 2080 representatives, or all of us.
Everybody's assigned on behalf of the council, if that's what you decide.
Do we need to define small towns, or is that pretty much assumed?
I would just say incorporated communities, if you're an incorporated community.
Yeah. They make up 9% or 10% of what isn't paying anything right now for the service.
Right, that wouldn't recoup the rural portion of the expense. That's why I like the emergency management solution, because it's comprehensive, it treats everybody equally, and will produce a budget that contains all of dispatch expenses in one location. The way they're, as I understand it, the way they're presenting the split 2080 into two 28Es would be to still maintain some of those communications expenses back in the other 2080, but... Because they didn't send us any new information, so I don't know what they're thinking, but based on what they sent us, it looks like that. I don't think it's a good idea.
You think a solution would be an EMS levy?
Yeah.
EMA.
That's what our last proposal was.
It says EMS here.
What's that?
It says EMS in the letter.
It's EMA. It's emergency management. It's EMS would... You would consider the...
EMS is the services.
Okay, so what does EMA stand for if it's not EMS? If it's EMS?
Emergency management. I'm not sure what the A stands for.
So it would be an EMA levy?
Right.
Isn't it agency?
It might be agency. Emergency management agency, could be.
How much you... What's the range? What is it?
Well, the budget, after figuring some things out, the budget's somewhere around $500,000, which the positives of going that direction is that it allows the city to alleviate some budget constraints within the general fund. It allows the county to alleviate some budget constraints in their general fund. And puts it into that levy specifically, so that... Of course, then the other thing is, is it allows that 2% allowable growth comment to be alleviated, because that takes the dispatch completely out of the general fund of the county, when they talk about 2% allowable growth.
So our proposal does not put a burden on anybody's general fund? In fact, it relieves their general fund, because it can shift that levy onto the EMS or EMA. And if they want to do tax relief with the money that freed up in their budget because of that, that's their decision.
So about how much levy would that be? I mean, the total amount, I understand, but this is a county-wide levy, is that correct?
I believe, last time I figured it out, it's around 54 cents. A thousand, or a thousand.
That was just for salaries, though, right?
No, that was the $500,000 total. I'd have to go back to make... To have a completely accurate number.
The city taxpayers are carrying that burden completely.
Well, not completely.
The salary portion.
But the salary portion, which is probably closer to 400, 400 to 450, not including the money that come... the money that come, that's getting into the weeds. But 911 funds, there's about $115,000 that comes into that budget from 911 funds. And then the county has basically two things they fund. They fund a $26,000 contract with Motorola for the computers. And then over the last 10 years, they've spent about $120,000 on moving a tower. So, essentially, that's the two things they've spent on. If you were to average it, they've spent $46,000 a year over the last 10 years on specifically dispatch services, where we're spending closer to 400.
That's correct. But I told them at this meeting that those expenses came in under the 2080 and they should have been brought to the Service Agency Committee for approval. And then the city would have shared those expenses according to the 2080 6733. But they declined to do that, and that's been going on for a long time. And it's created problems at the Law Center because, I don't know if you know or not, but a few years ago, you know, the sheriff's department remodeled part of the building and then the police department remodeled their part of the building and we sent bills to each other. And none of it went through the Service Agency, none of it was approved by either party. It's just kind of out of control and I think it hurts morale. So, if we could follow the 2080 and take that burden off of our police chief and other people that don't need to carry it, the council carries that burden, I think it'd be better for everybody. So, the 2080 Service Agency has to execute that document.
Yeah. One of the sticky things right now is we see this as the best answer. The Board of Supervisors, when it was first proposed that the EMS levy might be the answer, they couldn't decide whether to support that idea or not. In the meantime, the EMS board or EMA agency or whatever we want to call them, they had their meeting that they have, I believe it's in February, and they did nothing. And I think they did nothing because they couldn't tell if it was supported jointly by the 2080 or there was a difference of opinion about it in 2080. And there was a difference of opinion in the 2080. If we get the supervisors behind it the way we are behind it as far as that, I would think the EMA board or EMS group or whatever we want to call them would, I think they'd say, well, you know, it looks like that's the answer. They usually listen, so anyway.
I have a question about this last paragraph because I'm reading this, I'm putting myself in their position and it's somewhat unclear what is, there's no question here. There's no request, there's no action, there's no specific action requested. And I'm just thinking, is it implied that who invited who to a January 7th meeting? And we're basically saying, if you're not going to change your position, we'll decline that meeting. But before that, we say we want to meet before January 15th. So, we want to meet only if you're open to changing it. If you're not going to, if you want to keep it the same, we don't want to meet? Is that what this is saying?
Well, when they canceled our late November meeting in response to our proposal, they said they wanted time to consider a reaction to our proposal and they thought that would take until January.
All right, well, what's this, January 7th?
Well, that came later. When they said they wanted to wait until January to prepare their proposed answer to us, I said, no, I wanted it before that. That's where I told them I wanted it before January.
You wanted it before?
I did.
You personally?
Then they set it up our side. Then I think they proposed actually the 10th or the 7th, and John could not make the 10th. And so, I never agreed to the 7th, but that's the default position right now that they're in. So, the chair sent out an email a little while ago scheduling a meeting for the 7th, even though I'd objected to meeting that late.
You as council representative for the Service Agency?
Service Agency, right.
And who's our other representative?
Martha.
Okay.
Although Paul's been sitting in when Martha can't make.
Okay. So, I'm still unclear what this last paragraph is saying.
I think we can word.
Well, we got their response and it was just a cut and paste from the existing document. There was no change in their position or movement towards our position at all.
If they had, I think what we're looking for is a, if you don't have any other offer or discussion towards this position, then there's no reason to meet. If you would like to propose a alternative other than status quo, then there's a reason to meet. So, we would like to have, here, are you proposing no change whatsoever, again, which they've done for the last three years, or are you willing to talk about a change? And so, I can, so yeah, I think there's some wordsmithing that needs to go through because this is the first time I've read through this letter too.
Well, I guess I would just change that second sentence. If we see nothing beyond your status quo position or maybe just, you know, if your position is not to change the 2080, then there would be no reason to meet rather than mentioning January 7th specifically when it's not at this point a set meeting.
Which, where are you at, Michael?
The very last page.
It's just.
Last page.
Which, well, the last paragraph, right.
Just basically just saying it a little bit more straightforward, you know, that we'd like to meet, but if your position is to keep this 2080 as it is, then there's no reason to meet.
Yeah.
And I think Doug and I have talked a little bit and I think it would be wise to ask, if you're not willing to change any position, would you be willing to go to mediation or an arbitration to where we hash out in front of an arbiter or in front of a mediator where our sides are and kind of have them give us an option back rather than no?
At whose cost?
You share it.
It would be a shared cost.
Well, again, just to be clear, who's asking who to, who exactly is asking who to meet? Are we asking for a Service Agency meeting? Are we asking for a full council, full?
No, Service Agency.
It would be a Service Agency negotiating this.
That should be clarified as well.
Right. That was our initial thought, was to send them a letter asking them to dinner into either binding arbitration or mediation. But I was talking to John, you know, there's no provision in the 2080 for resolving this issue other than having a meeting and talking about it. So, generally, those are written that way. Apparently, John can correct me if I'm wrong because the idea behind the 2080 is that we're going to have a mutually agreeable document here that's going to provide a service to our communities. We don't want to give people an out or 90 days, we'll cancel this agreement type of clause because that's not where we want to go with this ever. We want it to be in place, we want it to serve the people of this community, but it has to be, from our view, has to be equitable. So, when I put that spreadsheet together last summer, you know, just based on population distribution between the city residents, taxpayers, and outside the city of Fairfield, you know, we're paying, if you expect the cost of that center to be distributed based on population, we're paying maybe $140,000, $150,000 extra each year beyond what we should be paying. We're paying about 72%. They're paying about 27% if I remember correctly.
Just to clarify, that's obvious, we all know that.
Right.
My concern was just, the way that it's worked in the past is that the two council representatives go to the Service Agency meeting. And if they need the council's support on something, they bring an issue back to the full council, council votes, and then the next Service Agency, they represent the council. And that's how it works. And so, I'm just saying, I just want to understand what this communication is back and forth, who's representing who and Service Agency. Again, you know, it's two council members, that's not a quorum, so they have no authority in and of those two. So, does this need to be a full council talking to the full, all three supervisors? Do we have to get our attorneys involved? And, you know, I was.
Well, the reason this letter actually is here tonight is because my thought was, we were going to ask them to enter into binding arbitration, I wanted council's approval to take that step.
See, now that's much more specific.
But that's a little bit less, John backed off on that in this letter.
Well, still, I just think, you know, who wants to meet with who isn't clear here. Is it the Service Agency or is it?
No, we're willing to meet with them if it's going to be productive meeting. If it's just going to be churning mud and not going anywhere, then what's the point of having a meeting?
All right. I just, the only change I would recommend is make it clear that it's a request for a Service Agency meeting. And then instead of referencing January 7th, just say, you know, if the county's position is to maintain the 2080 unchanged, then there's no need to meet. That makes it pretty clear.
And we should probably change the EMS to EMA.
Yep.
But then what's, my question then becomes, what's the next step?
If they decline.
Right? Yeah. If they, if they just say, you know, we have nothing new, then we're still not satisfied and there still needs to be a next step. So, to me, that's where I want to communicate that in this meeting as well.
Right, three, right?
We've had a few moments in the past where we were at odds with the Board of Supervisors and all three of the board came here and met with all of the council. And we did talk things over and it was productive. But this is a situation where it's getting everybody behind the idea of a levy we think answers the whole thing. And I don't know if that's possible or if, I don't know the makeup on the board over at the courthouse right now as far as if there's anybody over there that has any part of us that they agree with.
If we had a motion, if the agency has the approval from the council to support a levy, an EMA levy, and go to a Service Agency meeting with that authority, could we put it to a vote? See what they say? See what the outcome is? I mean, I think the mayor makes a point. We want to have a, we do want to have a next step. So, if we get to impasse and they say we're not, if we say we're not going to have a meeting unless you want to change, they'll say, fine, we won't have a change. Therefore, we won't have a meeting.
We won't have a meeting.
That's what we want.
Well, that's what we offered them in the last proposal was, we put all this under a separate 2080 and levy for it under the EMA.
What was their response?
Authority.
What was their response?
Their response was to cut and paste out of the existing 2080 and send it to us as their counterproposal to that, maintain status quo in other words.
So, I'm just thinking maybe the next step would be, we have the authority, if we get the authority from the council, the secret levy, an EMA levy, do we bring it to the next Service Agency meeting, put it to a vote? If they vote it down, then at least we have someplace, some more clarity of where to go from there, understanding what they're not willing to do.
I like that idea as well because the Service Agency is two council representatives, two supervisors, and a fifth citizen. And the citizen's supposed to be the chair, supposed to call the meetings. So, there's always a possibility the vote could go three to two in our favor.
She doesn't have a vote. The chair doesn't have a vote.
Sure.
It's two to two.
You said that.
Twenty eight.
The 2080.
Who said the city should pay for the dispatch salaries?
I always thought that, the fifth person, so they just arbitrate, they just chair the meeting?
She didn't take partake much in the meeting, during the meeting, so.
You know, the other option was always to bill.
I don't ever remember one of our chairs voting.
To bill the county and incorporated areas.
A odd number of.
Yeah, that is another option. We can do that without authority, without agency approval.
Okay, hang on, we're getting two, we're getting side conversations.
Yeah.
I think the chair's job should be to encourage the supervisors to meet us with a, you know, realistic counterproposal, but that hasn't happened yet. I mean, she can mediate the discussion if she wanted to, but she doesn't have the personality.
So, the other option that we talked about previously was to bill the county and the other incorporated areas.
Yeah, or.
Per capita.
I suggested to Aaron the other day that we just send them contracts this spring and they can either sign a contract and buy services for us or not. I don't know how you would do it, but.
Well, you'd go back to 50 years ago and they'd have to figure out how they're going to do something besides relaying stuff, which is a bad idea.
But John, if, let's say one of the smaller communities in the county, like some of them will use our police service, right, in 2080. And that's agreed upon, how much they're paying and what they're getting. Now, if the city's police went out there and there wasn't a 2080, we can't just bill them without them agreeing to it.
Well, and we'd need to be aware of their contract. Let's take the Bay City, they contract for their public safety, policing, and fire.
So, we'd send a contract this spring and they would sign it and agree to?
What if they don't sign it, is my question?
Well, and the question becomes.
How do you, how do you not take emergency call from someplace just because they don't have, you know what I mean?
Well, you take it, but it's where you send them.
It's an ethical issue.
We have from the minute of the call all the way through the confirmation of the response and result. That's what our system does right now. If you just say, well, we're going to refer you over to the agency that shares your services in that part of the county, there's another fire department down the road 10 miles and we'll see what they can do to help you.
That doesn't change the city's expense.
No, that's a bad idea.
Yeah, that doesn't change anything.
Yeah.
We don't want to go there. We don't.
No, no.
Well, I'm just saying, it's not up to the city of Fairfield to decide if those other cities are going to do that, sign those contracts for that service. They might just say, you know, you're going to do it anyway, we don't need to pay you.
Well, actually, there's court statutes or court, courts have decided that if you're an incorporated community, you're obligated to provide emergency services for your incorporated community. If you do not, if you don't have it, then you should have a contract or something with another agency to do, pay for that. You can't refuse to pay, which it was, it was Colfax versus Potawatomi County and the sheriff's office where they refused to pay the sheriff's office because we're not going to, we're not going to pay you for coming to our town to respond to emergency services, emergency calls. They lost in the Iowa Supreme Court for that. So, dispatch is very similar. We will take, because we're a PSAP, we're required to take the emergency 911 call. If you really come down to it, we can take that call and then forward it to another phone and say, we took the call, we forwarded it to your organization, it's your job to dispatch it. That's, that's the actual final hard-line stance. If you have to do it, not that anybody wants to do it, we never would, but you could do that.
So, say Batavia or Lockridge or Libertyville would have to find someone willing to take their 911 calls.
And then call their fire station.
Forward them to dispatch center, whoever it might be.
Yeah.
It actually creates a terrible hodgepodge.
Yeah, it's true.
Only way to look at it.
And that, you know, that may mean the difference between life and death for someone. So, we don't want that as a county.
So, what about the unincorporated areas?
Well, they're covered by the sheriff's office.
So, we would build sheriff's for those services?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Or just the county.
Or the county.
Right.
So, in the end, I guess what Doug, I think is Doug is asking is for us to send a letter trying to start a communication or negotiations and asking what they're willing to do, would they be willing to go to mediation or what, so that we can kind of get this moving forward?
You said the incorporated areas by law are required to provide services.
Absolutely, yes.
Are the unincorporated, or is a county also required by law to provide services in the unincorporated areas?
Yeah, the sheriff's, or the county is required to take care of the unincorporated areas, yes. That's what the sheriff's office is for. The fire departments have contracts with the townships to take care of fire services. And EMS is, well, we're contracted through the county and through the city for emergency medical services. So, those are all contracts, but they're not necessarily paying for dispatch services.
What I'm afraid will happen is we send them a letter, add some more detail in here about meeting and mediation, that kind of thing, they will just pigeonhole it. I think we should send a letter anyway, but based on what they just did this last couple weeks, sending the cut and paste to us, they haven't put any effort into making a movement toward our position. So, maybe this letter will do that, but I don't know, I'm not too optimistic.
They haven't tried to negotiate at all, is what you're saying.
Yeah, they're not negotiating.
I mean, I don't think the letter's going to be harmful as long as we don't completely close the door to some potential discussion. If we give them an out that allows them to say, we're at an impasse, so we won't do anything further, they will, there's a good chance they'll take that out.
Yeah, well, I think what you should say in here is like, John's kind of started Yeah, well, I think what you're saying here is, like, John's kind of started to say in here is, you know, if you have a new, if you have something other than the status quo, you have a proposal for us, an answer to our proposal that moves you off the current situation, send it to us, we'll meet with you.
What if they don't?
It's probable what's going to happen.
Right, so if they don't?
Well, we can ask them to go into mediation.
Well, could you ask them, you could say, decline your January 7th meeting, but we would look forward to a new proposal by January 15th, from them?
And then if we don't receive it, then schedule another meeting. But I don't want to be, I just want to be, I don't want to be in a situation where the city forecloses the opportunity for further discussion, because I think they'll take that. And then we'll be, we'll be left with the same agreement we have now for another, who knows how long?
Well, we got a couple of kilos each for the Emergency Management Agency. They have their required meeting, I believe it's the second Monday in the month of February. So that's not very far out from January 15th. Our January 15th date keys in on the idea, we've got some things that statutorily, as far as notice, on our own budgeting process and public hearing and so forth, we can't wait too much longer than mid-February to know if EMA is considering the levy, and to know where we are as far as our costs on the 2080 outside of communications, because every other part's supposed to have a figure plugged in by the time we take it to the council to approve it as part of the budget for our March 15th to March 30th deadline. I'm not sure anymore. Rebecca back there?
So, the 2080 calls for the service agency to develop a budget by January 15th of next year. I don't know if they will do that or not, but if they were just to duplicate the existing budget and turn that over into the next year, would this council accept it and approve it? I've asked them to approve budget for this building a couple of times, and I haven't gotten any movement on that. So if we ask him to approve a budget for that building by January 15th, which is what the 2080 requires, and they say, okay, we'll take the existing budget, duplicate it for next year, and that's the budget that we'll submit, would this council approve that budget? Because we wouldn't have authority to do it.
Well, you, as a service agency, wouldn't have the authority to approve it.
Counsel would have to look at it.
Well, I think we want to look at it, wouldn't we?
I can tell you what it's going to look like.
I'm wondering if it makes sense for the coun, to ask if the council would give the service agency authority to negotiate with the idea of imposing an EMA levy as a possible solution. So we can go to a service agency meeting with that as our, as our position and authority, and see how the county responds, understanding that we're supposed to have a fifth person who's a, kind of in between the five of us, the five.
All right, so if you want to make that motion tonight, and we can vote on it, we can put that into the letter that council has given authority to negotiate on that basis.
And that, if we're going, if with that authority, I think we ought to have an in-person, I think it would be valuable to have an in-person meeting to see, to, to put the county position when they have to give us their position. Because the letter, they can just respond by a letter, which is not, which can be not clear. But if they have to speak what their position is, or whatever their position is, it gives us something to work with. At least, that's my thought.
You mean full council and full, full Board of Supervisors?
No, I mean the service agency. We go to the next service agency meeting with, if we get the authority from the council to negotiate with the idea of imposing the EMA levy. As a, this could be a, that's a solution, we feel like that's a solution, we believe that's a solution, so let's have the, if we get the authority, let's use that and go into a meeting and see where we go with it.
Yeah, we've had that experience several times. It doesn't go anywhere.
Well, have we ever had a vote?
Well, it hasn't come to a vote at emergency management, at this point.
I mean, the service agency.
No, well, I'm talking about emergency management.
Well, what's the process? Does it go to the service agency first, or emergency, emergency management?
Well, we're trying to get the county to agree to using the service agency to levy for the expenses for dispatch.
Okay, so first the county, the first the service agency has to approve.
That's what we would like, yes.
Then it goes to EMA, or EMS.
I think if we presented the EMA with a, with a solid front between the two parties to the 2080, that they would be convinced to do it.
So.
They were on the verge of doing it once before.
So if we had the authority.
We were close, I would say, we were sort of close before, but then there just became, the muddies got watered because the county had questions, and they weren't sure, and they didn't under.
So we went separately and.
So then it kind of said, okay, well, that was tabled, and then there was no action. So, and then that's when we came together as the city and the county to say, okay, well, let's put a real budget together and really understand where these expenses are coming from over the last many years.
Right.
So that's kind of from the emergency management, how it got stalled.
Is it our position to recommend the levy or not? I mean, does that affect the citizens within the area, within the town of Fairfield, or just the?
That would be, yeah, that would be a county-wide levy that citizens in Fairfield along, would be levied against also, yeah. But that, like I had said earlier, that would relieve some of our general fund budget. So could we lower our other tax levy to offset that to an extent? Absolutely. And ideally, we probably would. Because this is, this is a, from my perspective, it's an artificial inflation of our tax levy, which some county supervisors have enjoyed making fun of our levy rate, because our levy rate's high.
Well, it's every, they have the big advantage, let's face it. I mean, let's, you know, they're not excited about making any changes. I mean, you know, as I say.
I don't know what's blocking them from moving forward.
Why would they be? I mean, they're not terribly willing to cooperate and look at the other side of the coin.
I think that's true. So, I guess, trying to move this forward a little bit. The council is okay with us sending a letter to the service agency with wordsmithing this a little bit?
But stopping short of, stopping short of binding arbitration?
Right.
And then, and then continuing, trying to get some sort of compromise.
When's the next scheduled service agency meeting?
The 7th.
The 7th of January.
All right, and this letter is saying we don't want to have the meeting unless you're willing to change your position in some way. Correct? The letter says that.
Yeah, if you don't, if you have nothing other than the status quo, then what's the point of meeting? Give us something new.
Well, that's, why don't we go, why don't we go with something new?
We have several times.
Do we have a, have we gone, have we gone to that meeting with the authority, with the support of the council, the council for an EMA levy?
Not by vote, no.
So why don't we go with that? We have that, that's something new for us.
Okay.
We go with that, we actually, we have the meeting, because I don't, I don't think we're going to have much success with the letter. I mean, it sort of allows them to do what they want to do, which is, so far, not much. But if we meet with them in person, and we have more, we have the authority to negotiate with the idea of possibly an EMA levy, then we have to find out truly what their position is. They have to give us what their position is. Not saying we're going to be successful, but I'm saying it's not going to be any less successful. It won't be any less successful than this letter. Maybe possibly there's a chance it'd be more successful. So, I'm going to make a motion. My motion is that the, that the council, full council, give the service agency the authority, or the members of the council, who are members of the agency, the authority at the next service agency meeting, to negotiate on behalf of the city with the idea that we have, we can possibly impose an EMA levy?
I think we do this one before you finish that motion.
Okay.
You may have gotten a copy of the proposal I sent to them last November, which is suggesting that we do an EMA levy to pay for this.
Right.
So can we have a motion that in principle, the council supports this approach that was offered in November as a vehicle for moving forward, that is to use the EMA levy to pay for it?
I, I, I don't think, I just, my concern is, I don't want them to be in a position where they can refuse it or reject on the basis, well, you already did that, and we refused it, or we haven't responded. I want us, I would like, I think we're going to have a better negotiating posture if we go in with something that we believe is new, which is the actual authority from the council, which we have not, apparently we have not yet had. So this is a new, new authority. New authority, if we get it, if the council's willing to agree to it.
I'm not questioning what's in the letter either, but I would rather do it this way, not send a letter, just to make sure that we're not giving lack of authority to something that we I, we'd probably need a copy in front of us before we would do that again. And I'm not questioning what's in there, but you understand, I mean, this is spelled out, I guess. I would, I would support this. And it's the same, it gets to the same place.
It might, it might shorten the meeting, too.
I'd rather it be a formal meeting than a letter with minutes and a vote.
Yeah, I think, I just think there's value in having that vote, and having their explanation, whatever it is, whatever it might be.
And if that happens on the 7th, and the EMA meeting is on the 10th?
No, not in February, right?
I'm talking January.
EMA meets on the 10th.
Council meets on the 10th.
Council meets on 10th. EMA, I think, meets in February. Is that right, John? EMA meets in February?
Yeah.
7th is a Friday.
Brett, Brett's are, got two different budgets already proposed, ready. One with an EMA levy and one without, so I've kind of.
Brett has one?
I've clued him in.
Okay.
So Paul, did you make a motion?
I was almost done. My, my motion is to ask the council for authority for the service agency, the members of the service agency to, when they meet with the, meet as a group on January 7th, to have the authority from the council to negotiate on behalf of the council to impose an EMA levy to resolve this issue here, this problem.
Okay, so basically.
Does that make sense?
Can I re, uh, speak it back to you?
Yeah.
So you want Martha and I to go to this meeting in January?
Actually, it would be Paul.
If it's Paul, then, okay.
Yeah.
Go to this meeting in January and present to them the same proposal we gave them basically in November in writing. And this is the council's by vote, council's position.
I think it's different.
Right.
I think it's different, because the proposal was made in January, or November was, wasn't from the council. This is from the council, so they know the entire council, if, if it's approved.
Sure.
And up to this point, it's been no action, so now you're saying, get it in the agenda for an actual vote.
Yes.
All right, I'll second that.
I'll second it.
Okay.
It sounds like the council doesn't want to send a letter. Is that my understanding?
So the motion is to have the representatives go on behalf of the council and take this to a vote for an EMA levy?
Correct.
And get it on the record as a vote up or down.
So you want me to go there and make the motion that the Jefferson County age, service agency adopt the position that we would form a budget for the dispatch center that would be funded by an EMA levy? That's my proposal in November.
Yes, I think so.
Okay.
That's what I heard. Moved by Gandy, second by Flornoy, and third by Marsha, Martha.
All right.
Just the last point. This also then gives us an opportunity to say, then what is your counterproposal? Do you have something other than a status quo?
Yeah, we'll get on the table with the motion in a second from our side, and then it'll probably be a 2-2 vote.
Correct.
Let's see. Let's find out.
I'll may vote the other way.
Unlikely, but let's just see what, let's see what they do.
Okay, so any other discussion or questions? Rebecca, please call the roll. Gandy.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
I just want to thank John for putting this load together on short notice. We talked about it last week, and I think he put it together today, so, appreciate that.
I know.
Even though we didn't use it yet.
Yeah. Yeah, it seems like it's still valuable, because the thoughts are there and can be communicated at your next meeting, too. So, yes, thank you, John. Okay, so, next action item is consideration of strategic plan executive summary. Aaron, you want to speak to this?
Yeah, this was just the, after our meeting last week, Elizabeth put everything together and is in more of a polished end result. After you all accept the executive summary, then we put together, or the city administration puts together a plan to handle the top five, top four, top three, whatever you all choose to move forward with that strategic plan. Today, you're just accepting or approving the executive plan as she has put it together.
So you want a motion to accept, accept the plan, correct?
No, move to accept plan?
Moved by Gandy.
Second.
Second by Toohill. Any other discussion, questions? Not, please call the roll. Gandy.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Okay, next resolution, consideration of resolution calling a special city election for the fire station. Melanie, you going to talk about this? Aaron, which one of you?
It's, this is the resolution to, to approve the bonding for the new fire station. We actually discussed it a little bit in Ways and Means prior to this. In the resolution, it says that we will not request, or we're asking for authority to bond up to $5 million for the new fire station. And that's set in the, that's set in the referendum for March 1st.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve resolution.
Moved by Gandy.
Second.
Second by Toohill. Any other questions, discussion? Not, please call the roll. Gandy.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Okay, great. Next, there will be a public hearing on the matter for citizen participation regarding proposed activities relevant to application for community development block grant for their funds.
He's available to call, but I don't know if we need him.
So.
Do, do you want Chris Bowers on the phone for the public hearing part, or for any of this, for the, for this grant? He's available, but.
Yeah, whatever.
If you have any major questions, I suppose we should ask him, but I think it's pretty.
So why don't I open the public hearing? And I assume there's nobody out there? Dave, nobody's out there, right? Okay, so, I'll close the public hearing. And we'll go to the resolution. So before you, you have the draft narrative and a draft budget. And this is authorizing me to sign the documents and submit the community development block grant application for the Sustainable Living Coalition Food Garden Initiative.
I would move approval of that motion, of your permission to sign.
Okay.
Second.
Moved by Flornoy, second by Gandy. Any discussion? I, I have a quick question, or actually two quick questions, and I'm not sure who can answer this. But in the original proposal, when we did it in committee, one of the things that was mentioned was that the education would be recorded, so that it could be used over and over again. That's not mentioned in here, or at least I didn't see it. Maybe I missed it? Bob, if you, if you'll stand there and go to, that's one question I have. The other thing is, I am concerned about the tools being outside city limits, just access for people. I don't know, maybe you don't feel it's an issue, but if we're dealing with low to moderate income, is that, is that an issue? I don't know, maybe not.
It may be, it may be. It's a, it's a mile, mile and a half out. If it turns out to be an issue, we can certainly find alternative places.
You'll adjust. Okay.
And I can assure you that the educational activities will be recorded.
Okay. I think we should include that in the narrative. I think we should include that in the narrative?
Yeah, that was, Chris created the narrative because he's the man to do it. So I don't know what the process of amending that would be, but it would make no sense whatsoever to do the education without recording it.
Right. Because we want this to be sustainable, not just for three years, and then it's over and it all falls apart. We want this to be ongoing.
The whole idea is to build the, build the capacity.
I'll, I'll mention that we'd like that part added to the narrative, if that's okay with the council.
We already have a motion on the floor, we need to amend the motion, I guess.
Who made the motion? Paul, you did.
Second?
Paul did.
So I'm in, I'm in the motion to include a recording of the educational portion of the grant activities into the draft narrative.
Second.
Now we need a vote.
Okay, any other discussion on that? Okay, let's take a roll call on the amendment. Flornoy.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Ham.
No.
Tohill.
Yes.
Okay, now we'll take a roll call on the original motion. Flornoy.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Okay. Tohill.
Yes.
Ham.
No.
No.
Okay, so both of those have passed 5 to 1. Okay, and would that change? So Aaron will communicate that. The next is a public hearing on the matter of amending the district ward boundaries because of the census. So I will open the public hearing on that, and anyone want to speak regarding new boundaries?
The, the boundaries that we drew were very similar to the old ward map. Nobody that's on council will be changing wards. We thought about adding, doing some gerrymandering to help, help some folks, but I won't say in a public meeting. But anybody that does gerrymandering and then looks at an ordinance would be in trouble. So, no, this is, I think we kind of straightened out some lines. The population balance in each ward is, the difference is 50 people from the highest ward to the lowest ward. So all the populations are real well-balanced. We actually have a 10% allowance, which is almost 200 people. So we, so we're set at 50, and we could have gone up to 200. So I think we've done a pretty good job of balancing that. Rebecca did a, Rebecca and Melanie spent a lot of time wordsmithing the ordinance so that it is correct, defining the boundaries in the ordinance. So I, we need to get this passed, so I would request that we waive the.
What's the wording?
Waive the.
Second, third reading?
The second, or waive, waive the rules and move to a third reading.
Suspend.
Suspend the rules, thank you.
I'd make a motion that we suspend the rules for this.
Let me close the public hearing first.
Let's close it already.
Sorry.
No, sorry. I'll close the public hearing officially. And now, by the way, can we get a new ward map that looks like this with all the streets on it?
We, we will try, yeah.
Yeah, I think that'd be great for everybody.
The new, the new program that the county, or the state put together is not very user-friendly, so we're doing the best we can so far, but we'll get there.
Yeah.
What does that have to be approved by?
We have to approve it ASAP, and then the county has to have their whole map, to include our map, done by the 15th.
So how soon do we have to have it approved? ASAP means what?
Now.
As soon as possible.
That's, that's why I'm asking to waive the rules of the ordinance to approve it tonight.
Can supervisors meet the first week of January next? Or do they meet next week?
Uh.
Probably Monday.
They usually, they usually meet every week, but you've still, you've still got the auditor, the auditor has to handle all of the, everything to get it all put together. So the sooner we can get our ordinance done, the easier it is for the county to get everything done for them.
The reason I ask is I'm concerned that if we waive two ordinance readings and we go directly to the third, I don't know that councils had an opportunity to review the changes. I mean, the changes, what you're saying, sound minimal. They sound minimal.
They are very, they are very minimal.
But I think, I think it would be the council would want to, or at least I would, would want to review what the changes are, or have them explain to me so I just know for sure what I'm voting on.
If you look at the, at the different ward maps, basically I tried to straighten out the lines where I used Highway 1 and I used the Burlington, or the railroad right-of-way.
You want me to explain?
Yeah, you can explain it in better detail. Essentially, I was trying to square things off and make them, straighten them out better.
More important than that, what was the range of population, voting population in each ward? What was the range of?
The biggest ward was, I think, 1907, and the smallest ward was 1856.
That's now, but what do you have before?
I don't know.
Did you narrow it?
I narrowed, I think we narrowed it.
Okay. So Paul, on the second ward, this chunk.
Yeah.
From, on the west side of Fourth Street, got moved to Third, so squared off the second ward at Highway 1 and the railroad. This block, catty corner from Washington Elementary, got moved into Fourth. So now Madison and D is the corner of the Fourth Ward. Got it? Okay, and then, can't tell you exactly the streets, but what, it goes over to Fourth and then down and goes through some alleys in this area. So Sixth and Seventh went, Sixth and Seventh Street in this area went from Fourth to Fifth. And then there's a few down here, like Polk, Iowa, that went from Fifth to Fourth. So Fourth generally got smaller.
Which ward was changed the least and which was changed the most?
One was changed the least. And probably Third, Third was changed the least. Fourth was changed the most.
Yeah, large wasn't changed at all.
Thanks, Doug.
Good, it's good. All right.
And one other thing we did with the ordinance is the previous ordinance outlined every jog in the city limits boundary. So we changed it so that the ordinance said, everything on this side of the city limits boundary, so that if we would annex, like Libertyville Road, will automatically go into the Fifth Ward, because we saying, you know, everything north of the South boundary line, of the South city limits line is in Ward 5. So that clarified a lot in descriptions.
We tried to use the KISS principle quite a bit, simplify it.
Yeah.
But is there a possibility that if you annex in too much?
Yeah.
Too many voters, that would trigger a realignment of the wards, wouldn't it?
Yep, and that's why they do it every 10 years with the census.
It could happen before that if we annexed and it could not, even if we annexed a large number of people?
No.
Just, just when the US Census happens.
Yep.
Okay, now we'll take your motion, Doug.
I move that we suspend the rules for the purposes of this motion to amend the ward boundaries.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, move by Flornoy, second by Tohill. Any more discussion? Okay, we are suspending the rules. Go ahead and make the roll call, Paul. Flornoy.
Yes.
Tohill.
Yes.
Gandy. Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Okay, now do you want to make the next?
I didn't get rid of Maxine.
What's the ordinance number?
Does this have an ordinance number?
I don't get it until we pass it. It will be 1208.
So I would move that we adopt ordinance 1208, the amending of the wards' boundaries, and to move on the first, the third, and final reading.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any other discussion? Not, please call the roll. Flornoy.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Tohill.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. We'll move on to committee reports, Ways and Means Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. The Ways and Means Committee met this afternoon at 4:00, approximately 4 o'clock. Present were Doug Flornoy member, myself, Chair, and later in the afternoon came our third member, Katie Anderson. Also present was the city administrator, Aaron Koiker, city clerk, Rebecca Loper, and city engineer, Melanie Carlson. The mayor came in at a later time as well. We had, we ended up with four items for discussion this afternoon. First item was a discussion relative to the finance depository institution. As we all know, Midwest First National Bank has been, being absorbed or purchased by Midwest One Bank. So the question that come up in a previous council meeting is whether we should keep our deposits with a First National Bank, which is going to be part of Midwest Bank, and perhaps a regional bank and not a local bank, or whether we should move our business to a more local bank. The administration, Aaron Koiker, our city administrator, presented his, his research this, this afternoon, and it came down to two banks that were considering, Midwest One and Iowa State Bank and Trust. It's a recommendation of the committee, after discussions with Mr. Koiker and the members, that we ask representatives from Midwest, both Midwest One and Iowa State Bank and Trust, to come before the full council to present the case of why we should give one or the other the business of the council, business of the city. And so our, my motion to the council is that the council approve of the recommendation and invite representatives of Midwest One and Iowa State Bank to present before the council for us to decide which one is going to be the one receives the city's business going forward.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, any discussion? Not, please call the roll. Gandy.
Yes.
Tohill.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Yes.
Rasmussen. Ham.
Judy.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. That passed.
Second item for discussion this evening, this afternoon was a discussion relative to ARP, or ARPA funds. Yeah, the discussion had centered around the funding for the proposed fire station. We voted this afternoon, as we know, this evening for a bonding referendum to take place in the spring of the next year. And the discussion was to what extent we should commit ARPA funds to the building of the fire station. After some back and forth, it was a, it's a recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee that the city commit or pledge one, up to, I believe, $1 million, or pledge, just simply pledge, $1 million to the building of the fire station contingent upon the bonding referendum passing in the spring of this year for up to $5 million in funding by bond. So I would make a motion that, to this entire council, that it approve the Ways and Means Committee recommendation that we, we commit $1 million in ARPA funds to the building of the fire station if the bonding referendum passes in the spring of this year. Bonding referendum, bonding referendum, which will allow up to $5 million bonding or borrowing for the building of that fire station.
I'll second it.
Okay. Moved and seconded to have this proposal for up to 5 million bonding and 1 million of ARPA funds towards the fire station.
But we should remind everybody that we are actually receiving almost 1.6 million, 1.57 million dollars, so the.
Good point.
Ways and Means is not making any recommendation about the remaining $570,000 approximately, because we know there's some proposals on the table for funding in other areas.
That's right, that's right. So we're not, we're not recommending the spend of all the ARPA funds on the fire station. We're leaving, as Doug said, $570,000 in reserve for other, other perhaps investments.
No other questions or discussion? Please call the roll. Gandy.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Tohill.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Finally, or not finally, but our third point of discussion was council chamber updates proposal presented by Mr. Koiker in that we had a budget of $15,000 that was budgeted out of lost funds for paying interest, I believe.
Interest or taxes for the spec building? I can't remember. I think it was interest, but.
Paying interest on a spec building that we've since sold, so we don't have to pay that interest. So we have $15,000 budgeted for that, which we don't have to spend. Mr. Koiker is suggesting that we use that for various expenses that involve upgrading the chamber, council chambers. The first expense is to incur an expense of somewhere around $3,700 or so, and includes installation for new microphones. And the, the recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee is that unanimously is that the, that we approve or adopt the expense for new microphones. Turns out these microphones are 10 years old, and they're starting to, we're having problems with them. The new microphones that we understand from hearing from Jason are going to be a lot better. So we're recommending to the council that they approve or adopt the expense for microphones up to around $3,700 or so and replace the ones we now have. That's my motion.
Second.
Okay, I moved and seconded to spend 2,700 plus installation on the microphones? Any other question? Call the roll. Gandy.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Tohill.
Yes.
Ham.
I'm standing, I couldn't hear what Paul was saying.
Man, I'll do my best. All right. Judy, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I'll try better, all right. We, a second motion, our second point of discussion was a motion to adopt expenses, additional expenses for new chairs. The chairs that the council is now sitting in are 11 or 12 years old, and they're in a state of decline.
They're hazard sometimes.
They're a hazard even sometimes. And so it's been recommended by our city administrator that we replace the chairs at a cost of approximately.
$650 a chair.
$650 a chair. The council's, the Ways and Means Committee's recommendation to council is that we adopt an expense for the new chairs with the proviso that the provider of the chairs, which is Wiley Office Supplies, out of.
Bailey.
Bailey's Office Supply. Bailey's, this is interior, forgot it. Bailey's out of a Tamaa with the proviso that they provide us a sample chair. And if we don't like that one, then we maybe, you know.
Find something else.
Find something else. But we want to adopt the, the recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee is that we adopt the expense for the new chairs, with the understanding that if we are not satisfied with the chairs provided by Bailey's, we might find another source.
With the scheduled chair testing session.
Yes, thank you for adding that, Doug. Doug will be in charge of that.
No, that's Katie's idea, so she can.
That's the motion to adopt that expense.
Did you second that, Tom?
I second that.
I second that.
Okay.
Alright.
Any other discussion? Not, please call a roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Flonoy?
Yes.
The final mo, the final recommendation, and next the final item is the council discuss, the committee discussed whether or not we should adopt an expense to purchase new iPads for each council member and the mayor. And I believe the iPads, we have first generation iPads, which are in state of disrepair. Mr. Coiker is suggesting that we could purchase good iPads, new iPads, but you know, basic iPads for approximately how much per?
Three hundred and fifty dollars a piece for the iPad, and if you got a case with a keyboard, it'd be another hundred and fifty.
Alright, about $500 total for each iPad. It's a recommendation of the committee that we leave it to each council member to decide whether or not they would like the, to be provided a new iPad. So our recommendation to the councils that, the motion is that the, each individual council member and the mayor be allowed to make the decision as to whether or not they like a new iPad or an iPad, and communicate that to our City Administrator, which at which point if you decide you want one, he'll purchase it. It will be city property, of course. It's for the city, it's not for you personally.
Up to including the keyboard and the, which of the item?
Well, the keyboard and, well, the keyboard and the cover were one piece of equipment. There are other things if need be, they're not
$200 amount, just $500?
Five, five, five hundred dollars per iPad with keyboard, is that correct?
That's about right, yeah.
Yeah.
If you want all that stuff.
If you want all that stuff. You just amended my motion, I'll just add it in there. Yeah, okay. So the motion is to adopt the expense that each council member can decide for themselves whether or not they want the city to incur the expense of buying a city property of an iPad, expense roughly $500 or so for your per, for your use as a city employee.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded by Flonoy. Any other discussion? Not, please call a roll.
Gandy? I do have one question.
Yeah, oh, sorry.
Are we going to be using these for anything in addition to what we're using them now for? Will we need an upgrade for any reason other than what, I mean, other than just to look at minutes and do what we're doing right now?
Store documents, Zoom maybe. I can't imagine we need, we wouldn't, the only time I can think we would need an upgrade is if Apple were to require one because of the way they're configuring their programs.
I mean, you make a good point.
Do you mean an upgrade of the software or an upgrade of the hardware, like a new iPad?
He's, I think
Both. I mean, like software primarily. I mean, are we going to be using them for anything that, if we keep the old one, we're not going to be capable of doing?
Well, the old ones, a lot of the, right now, a lot of them fail with what we're trying to do now. The what, the new one, obviously will have a lot of the software upgrades that they've done over the last 10 or 15 years. And we're not, I mean, if we wanted to do Zoom meetings or whatever, we could probably do that on new ones. I don't, I'm almost positive I can't download Zoom onto that new iPad or the old one to make it work.
I mean, I'm not looking to spend the money, but I think we should maybe do it just blanket, either all or nothing, because if, if we have four old ones out there and three old ones out there and they won't communicate, then we need them
I see your point.
Is anybody using the old ones?
I, I use mine.
Do you?
Yeah. And I don't have a problem with it right now for what we use it for. We're going to be using it for something
Well, I think you make a good point, but the idea of using it for electronic meetings or, you know, remote meetings on Zoom, we can't, I don't think the technology, you can't use the old one for that. And we're not use, we're not doing those kind of meetings now, remote meetings, but I can see where we would if we had the technology to do so. For example, Judy, for example, if she were, she had her iPads, she could be, we could have her on our screen, for example.
Right.
So there's value there.
So you're saying buy one for everybody regardless of how they feel personally and
And if we can get any, I, the old ones I'm sure aren't worth anything, but I, I, like I said, I'm not suggesting we spend them, you know, spend more money, but I, I think if we get three or four of them, and then we get to the point where we need to do something and three or four of them won't do it, and three or four of them will,
Right.
we're, we're not going to be money ahead at all. It's, it's not, we're not progressing.
That makes sense, I would, I'll amend my motion. I'll amend my motion such that we, go ahead.
If we all agree to do it, then we just have decided we're all going to buy them.
Okay.
We're covered.
So just leave it?
I think we're okay.
Alright.
Okay.
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay, so all those in favor of buying new iPads? Aye.
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 Okay, I'm going to make it simple.
Okay.
Anybody opposed, say nay. Okay.
We have to make a motion.
Do we make a motion?
Yeah, we have to make a motion.
What?
You can't make a motion.
No, I thought he did make a motion.
Oh, he did, didn't he?
Yeah.
Wasn't quite that, but okay, that's good.
You made a motion, he seconded.
Alright.
So, okay.
I'm good. At the last point of our meeting Mayor, is we had a discussion as to what to do with the, the microphones, the, the old microphones and the old, and the chairs. And it was decided, a recommend, decided, I don't know this requires a council vote, but we just want to bring it to council's attention, that we're going to direct our City Administrator to donate the chairs and microphones, subject to council approval, to an appropriate charity or appropriate, appropriate entity or source. So
Google over somebody.
Yeah, yeah.
But I think if, if he finds a recipient, then we would need to approve the giving of the city equipment to that
Right.
recipient.
Right, right, subject to council approval, correct. And that concluded our Ways and Means Committee meeting. Thank you Mayor.
Great, thank you. Okay, so next we will do some swearing in of different officials and personnel. I, state your name, do solemnly swear
I, Connie Boyer, do solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution
that I will support the Constitution
of the United States
of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of Iowa
and the Constitution of the State of Iowa
and that I will faithfully and impartially
and that I will faithfully and impartially
to the best of my ability
to the best of my ability
discharge all duties of Mayor
discharge all duties of Mayor
in the city of Fairfield
in the city of Fairfield
as now or hereafter required by law
as now or hereafter required by law.
Take mini pictures, you know how to make it bigger and smaller.
Okay. So now we will do our three new council members. So do, can I do all three of them at the same time? Okay, so if Elizabeth, Doug, and
No, no, she should have her own, I think she should have her own.
Oh, Elizabeth should have her own, maybe because this is her first time. Okay, and then we'll do your two together.
My mother, my mother.
No, no.
Oh, you want yours by your own?
My mother, my mother.
Okay, so sorry.
That's okay.
Should I ask first? Sophie, come up here
Yeah.
and raise your right hand. I, and then state your name.
I, Elizabeth Estey.
Do solemnly swear
do solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of Iowa
and the Constitution of the State of Iowa
and I will faithfully and impartially
and I will faithfully and impartially
to the best of my ability
to the best of my ability
discharge all duties of council member
discharge all duties of council member
in the city of Fairfield
in the city of Fairfield
as now or hereafter required by law
as now or hereafter required by law.
Great, thank you, congratulations.
Sophie wasn't in the pictures.
Okay, uh, Mr. Gandy. Okay, if you raise your right hand. I, and then state your name.
I, Paul Gandy.
Do solemnly swear
do solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of Iowa
and the Constitution of the State of Iowa
and that I will faithfully and impartially
and that I will faithfully and impartially
to the best of my ability
to the best of my ability
discharge all duties of couns, council member
discharge all duties of council member
in the city of Fairfield
in the city of Fairfield
as now and hereafter required by law
as now and hereafter required by law.
Okay, great, thank you, congratulations.
Paul Kabor, you're coming back.
Okay, Mr. Flonoy, raise your right hand. I, and state your name.
I, Davis Flonoy.
Do solemnly swear
do solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of Iowa
and the Constitution of the State of Iowa
and that I will faithfully and impartially
that I will faithfully and impartially
to the best of my ability
to the best of my ability
discharge all duties of council member
discharge all duties of council member
in the city of Fairfield
in the city of Fairfield
as now or hereafter required by law
as now or hereafter required by law.
Great, thank you, congratulations. Okay, Rebecca. Uh, City Clerk. I
I, Rebecca Loper.
Do solemnly swear
do solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of Iowa
and the Constitution of the State of Iowa
and that I will faithfully and impartially
and I will faithfully and impartially
to the best of my ability
to the best my ability
discharge all the duties of City Clerk
discharge all the duties of City Clerk
in the city of Fairfield
in the city of Fairfield
as now or hereafter required by law
as now or hereafter required by law.
Thank you, congratulations. Chief Thomas.
Get my good side.
Repeat after me. I, and state your name.
I, David Thomas.
Do solemnly swear
do solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of Iowa
and the Constitution of the State of Iowa
and I will faithfully and impartially
and I will faithfully and impartially
to the best of my ability
to the best of my ability
discharge all the duties of Police Chief
discharge all the duties of Police Chief
in the city of Fairfield
in the city of Fairfield
as now or hereafter required by law
as now or hereafter required by law. Thank you.
Thank you for serving Fairfield. One more, Mrs. Herr Morrissey. I'm getting verklempt doing these, actually.
Yeah, I do already well with that.
And just do one more. Good thing there's not more, more than just one more. Might not make it all the way through. Okay, please raise, raise your right hand. I, and then state your name.
I, John Morrissey.
Do solemnly swear
do solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of Iowa
and the Constitution of the State of Iowa
and that I will faithfully and impartially
that I will faithfully and impartially
to the best of my ability
to the best of my ability
discharge all the duties of City Attorney
discharge all the duties of City Attorney
in the city of Fairfield
in the city of Fairfield
as now or hereafter required by law
as now or hereafter required by law.
Thank you, thanks for serving another year. A pleasure to serve with John. Alrighty. So we have, oops. Alrighty, so welcome Elizabeth. Look forward to working with you. So we have just a few more organizational action items.